Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our council work session for May 22. We're going to jump right into it. We've got the recycle donation bins subject and addressing policy. Mr. Manager, you want to kick us off?
Yep, we get a couple, couple items from Neighborhood Services. The first was the one delayed from a couple of weeks back. So we've got recycling bins first.
Great. Good morning, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Eric Glundy, Deputy Director of Neighborhood Services and acting as zoning enforcement officer still until the replacement comes forward at that point, then I'll hopefully hand that off. I didn't say that. I don't know if I can handle both for that long, though. That's, that's the thing. So we're back again. I think that your last workshop or a couple workshops ago ran a little long. So we, we pushed this off till this meeting, but we're back to discuss specifics on the donation bin situation. The first thing that been working with our legal department, it was important that we would have to define the activity of what these are actually considered because the, how we define them is critical in terms of how we're able to manage and enforce with regard to them. In this case, I think if we are going to allow these types of bins around the community, we definitely want to be specific in what we want to have in our community and not get too broad because then that makes it harder to manage and enforce over time. So this is an example of three different descriptions used in three different ordinances around the country. You can see that the facilities range everything from only recycling materials to other salvageable property such as consignment, the types of things you see with goodwill. And it includes the use then for distribution or for resale or recycling in one situation. I think that's going to be important because in the, the company we're dealing with at the moment, they certainly take in donations, but in, in reality, they're, what they're actually doing is a recycling activity. They're not really giving them back for resale at, at locations or anything of that nature. So if you want to be a little broader to allow that, maybe another company would also make the donations available for resale or consignment, then you would want to broaden the definition. But if you strictly just want to allow it for this recycling activity that we're experiencing right now, then you would, you could limit it to the recycling piece of it.
These options, are we still looking at the option of having them enclosed just like the, just like your garbage bins are in the back of the building?
That, that would be, that would be the do nothing. That's the way we currently would treat them.
Okay. And that's, that's an option.
Yes. Yeah, that would be, that would be an option. These, this is just an example to, these three are examples just to give the broadness of what they are around the country and, you know, the range of what some locations consider and how narrow it could be. And again, as you're going to see with our recommendations, we're going to be suggesting a more narrow if, if they are going to be enabled. So the options are, the basic options here, option A through D here, allow them with a site location approval as a permit. Allow them with allowance through the, being considered as an accessory structure in, as we do with chapter 135 accessory structures. Allow them with approval through a conditional type use, which would draw in the zoning component of it, which would take them to the zoning board of adjustment. Or treat them, the option D that Linda just mentioned, treat the donation bins per the current codes as a refuse collection container with all applicable screening and landscaping requirements as we currently have in our code. So option A, the advantage is there. This would be a similar type process that we use for mobile food vendors and transient merchants on private property, where we would have an annual type permit that would have a fee and a review to ensure that the placement is in accordance with certain standards. This would be collected at the city clerk's office if we did it in this method. The disadvantage is there would be that additional staff time in the review and renewal of fees and a cost. And of course, we would want to recoup that through a fee collection. Option B would be to treat it more as an accessory structure in our code by amending chapter 135. This would be similar maybe to what we do with temporary structures and would only be a one-time thing where we would allow them as a, as a specific placement and basically be allowed to be kept there in perpetuity as a structure essentially. And the disadvantages of this is they're really not a type of thing that's covered under building codes. So there really isn't any building safety kind of review or aspect to it. They are more challenging to enforce when they do get moved around or not maintained. And certainly the enforcement, when there's more enforcement, that's going to add more cost. And then the revenue in this situation would be a one-time fee situation versus an annual type fee that puts a little bit of responsibility to be maintaining when you have an annual type fee. And there's another review. Option C, we're talking about a conditional use that would go to zoning board of adjustment. When we have this process, this would be a higher level of transparency with neighbors because there'd be a notification process. There would be a formal hearing. And the enforcement is a little stronger perhaps because when we go through this process, we have kind of a stronger legal leverage if we do have problems by taking them back to the zoning board of adjustment, making them accountable. Certainly on the end of enabling them, the disadvantage is this is a more onerous process that would involve time. If you think about all the locations that they want to put these, that would involve that many separate items in front of the zoning board of adjustment. And certainly, cost-wise, probably the most costly in terms of the staff time and review for that board process. So those are the, that would be the disadvantages. And then of course, option D is, is the, what we're doing currently. The advantages are we would not require any code amendment process. This would be the most discouraging to the allowance for these bins. Probably the biggest hurdles to be treated as a dumpster with a full enclosure. That's very expensive, I'm sure. And then the disadvantages of this are we would, we would not be able to really realistically enable or practically enable this business model. And when we do get them, we're in an enforcement situation going after somebody doing something they're completely not allowed to do, basically. So that's the, the disadvantages. There's a certain number of things that we would recommend for all, all of these types of requests except for option D really, which is, is the current situation. We want a certain amount of information and basically to register these, make sure that we have owner's consent, making sure that we have owner's approval for the city to come in and remove if, if possible. That's something I think we still would need legal review on, but it would be one of the intents here. We would want the owner to waive their rights to go after anybody for damages, especially the city with regard to these. We would want them to provide a plan that shows where these are going to be located so that we can hold them to this plan and that location with specifics. We would want to limit this to a one-year allowance to start building a track record and also have a review to make sure things are being maintained and kept properly.
And Eric, isn't this going to open it up so we could end up with three or four different kinds of bins on a property?
Certainly that would, we would, we're, we would be going forward with the assumption that this was available for, you know, several different operators.
Anybody, any place, anywhere.
Yep.
Can you limit to one per site?
Yeah. So if, as we go through this, what we're recommending that we only allow it in P1 and P2 districts. These are the civic institutional districts where we would have public buildings, churches, schools. And the legal staff believes that that's more enforceable because of the nature of the donation function of them and that putting them in commercial or mixed-use areas would be, we would be able to be defensible to limiting them from those areas where they might be more, become more clutter or add to more sign clutter, other things that you see in mixed-use and commercial areas. We definitely want to regulate where these can be within the property. We want to make sure that it's not a vacant property. We want it to have a primary use. Staff is recommending that it be outside the front yard or street side yard setback for the buildings that are on the property as we currently define them by chapter 135, that we don't place them with any drive aisles, loading spaces, fire lanes, walkways to impede pedestrian or vehicle traffic. And we do not want them placed in, within the right-of-way. In fact, we're recommending 100 feet. You've seen, I highlighted that on the slide there. That's certainly something I think that the council would, we would want the council to weigh in on whether that's extending it too far back for what the, you know, allowance, if there's this allowance for this business model, is that putting them at any kind of disadvantage? We, we believe 100 feet's appropriate, but certainly that would be something that the council would have something to talk about on that.
The bins you've seen so far, how, how far?
They're, they're like zero. So.
But they're on, they're on, you said no drive lanes, no?
Yeah, they've, they're all on the drive. Yeah, they've moved them, they've moved them off or away. We, we definitely don't want them blocking any actual traveled lane areas.
No, but they're, they're typically when they pull into school and they're dropping their kids off, the bins.
Yeah, they're right next to the lanes so that somebody could actually park and probably block traffic in some cases during busy times to get out and put something in.
The, the school actually, well, I don't know if it's school, but it's the EPA or whatever, the, they usually get something. Well, I know they have been getting.
Yeah, they get a, they get a return based on their agreement with the vendor. So, on, which is based on volume, I think. From the ones that I heard from was somewhat substantial.
It's been pretty sizable.
Eric, the, the question that I have is, I mean, we have an ordinance against these now. And these just appeared. Did, did the people who are running this, I mean, how confident are that they would even follow these rules? Because they placed them there and they're not even supposed to be there now. And they didn't, they didn't come and talk to anybody. They didn't.
So I've had, you know, a lot of conversations since they originally popped up. And so they've, they've presented their business model. I don't think we see eye to eye on everything for sure. I mean, they want them, you know, in those places that they placed them, which in some cases was actually on right-of-way.
On sidewalk.
They weren't necessarily aware that that was public right-of-way, but, so I don't think they intended to be in the right-of-way, but in some cases they were. But certainly the placement that we had is what drew, drew them to our attention in the first place or drew the complaints that we received. So they're aware that when we come back with something, or if we come back with something, that they'll have input into that process and they may, they might push for some of their own standards. I think ideally, they wouldn't want 100-foot setback, or they would want them to be placed where they're visible from the street or more visible. So, so some of these things we're recommending from our perspective definitely would be discussion points that would come about through the approval process and the code changes.
I mean, a 100-foot setback, that, that's the equivalent of two lot lines, right? Or two, because I mean, we have a 50-foot.
Yeah, it's, it's a substantial difference. Again, and I didn't just draw that out of a hat. That was one that was in several places around the country. I think it's probably because in a lot of cases, there's, these are expected to be on larger properties like schools, you know, something with a bigger scale than a small, like a small business, for instance. So typically, I would say, under our old code, much of our development pattern probably had minimum 25-foot setbacks in residential areas. But schools and churches were always supposed to be 35 feet back from, from property line. So if, if that gives you a sense of.
Do they all meet the 35 foot? If, if we said 35 feet, would all the existing ones sit right now? Do they all meet that?
No, I don't think they would, the way they're currently placed. But certainly if, the way we're proposing this is to push them maybe back at the building versus out where the public might stop in the middle of the street and jump out and put something in.
If I could interject that, one, one, another way of thinking about this is if you wanted to allow these, would you want them to be destinations that have an association with the property owner? The school's talking about it with their parents, or the church is talking about it? Or do you want them for the general public that may not be aware of them that's going to drive by and see them and use them? Because, you know, there's a big difference about putting it inside the property line that far. But there's still value in doing that if it's associated with the school or church.
Yeah, but they're not just getting it from, I mean, they're, they're getting it from the, the neighborhood and the neighbors around it.
Which is fine, but.
I mean, that's, and it is, I don't know.
So by highlighting that 100 feet, I wanted to make it clear that that may be something that the council would want to slide one way or the, well, probably not the other, make less. But, because as was pointed out, 100 feet is, is a significant distance back.
Does that eliminate some properties just by having a 100-foot setback?
I don't know if it eliminates them if we're really focused on things that are allowed in P2. I think it puts them in the back. I think it puts them in the side for sure.
Right. It's the back and the side, not the front.
Which, again, we're proposing not to be in the front. Right now, we're recommending that. That's, that's probably another discussion point.
Even if you did 50 feet, get some of these out of the front and forces to the side or back, I would think.
And if, if you come forward with changes in front of you for a formal process, you might even want another board of commission to look at this as a sounding board.
Not really.
I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there. Doesn't, it's not a requirement. I'm just saying that there would be public input through that process. And so you don't have to decide today, but certainly the direction we're proposing is 100. If you think we're way off, we probably need to go take, take away something different today. The other thing we wanted to regulate was the, the maximum size, heights, cubic volume, the construction of material that they would be made of. We don't want, you know, wooden boxes are going to rot in place.
Right.
We want to make sure that they're kind of a safe situation where they've got a one-way kind of lockable door that people can't get access to the materials inside. Hopefully they don't try with a one-way type door.
And all of the ones that are existing meet that current square feet and?
Yeah, I don't think that presents any issues for this particular vendor.
Okay.
As mentioned before, we would suggest that the donation bids not exceed more than one bin for sites of five acres or less and no more than two for sites of five acres or greater. So again, with the scale of the site, you could go to more, more bins. We would want it to be put on the durable paved surface, not on grass surface. Some of those currently are on grass surfaces. Donation bins, we do not want to collect any kind of hazardous-type materials. So we would want them marked as such, basically, so that they don't, I don't think there's any intention to do so, but we would want to make it clear it's on the operators and the owners to make sure that doesn't occur. And then we would want messaging on these that would make it clear about what was allowed and how to get ahold of the operators. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Eric, in other cities, are the, are you aware of anything other than clothing that has popped up?
Oh, I think that there's a lot of communities that allow things that you would get donated to like goodwill, other consignment-type items, household items, quite a range of things, frankly.
That are dumped in donation, that are specific donation bins as opposed to going to the Salvation Army or Goodwill or other?
Right, right. So I think even in other places around the country, you know, those, those entities actually have bins themselves in other places. I think in, in central Iowa, they've found that they are better off having donations brought to their specific location where they can, you know, process and manage that immediately.
But, but how would you put something inside? I mean, it'd have to be only, I mean, those, those bins aren't big enough to put anything inside.
No, that's, yeah. I'm, I'm just saying that there are, there are situations that aren't just clothing, that there's other range of materials.
Is it like a big, like semi that we're allowing? I mean, I guess I don't understand what you're saying.
Well, with the size that we're recommending, it wouldn't be very practical for them.
Right. That's, okay.
Yeah, but so.
So that takes that off the table.
We're still talking about clothing to be, to be bundled and recycled, not to be resold, right?
That's the, that's certainly the direction I think we're recommending, that you get, narrow it down and focused on that versus allowing a range. And that was what we sort of talked about in that definition of what was going to be allowed. And certainly you could, as a council, could make it very specific.
I mean, it's not clothing that's going to be resold or given away to somebody who needs it. These are rags.
Correct. I think in a lot of places I've seen, you know, they want shoes, they want clothing, books, other things like that.
So that's not stuff to be recycled. That's stuff to be reused.
That would be something to be resold, then. I'm just saying, around the country, there's, there's a range. It's not just stuff to be recycled. It's stuff to be resold and recycled.
But.
Depending on the operator, right?
We can make specific to the recycle, like what it is right now.
City council could certainly make it very narrow. Yes. And that's what's being recommended.
Okay. Is there a consensus at this point in time to do that? I know we're going to get to recommendations here soon, but.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm probably open to a great, greater number of uses from a recycling and even reuse perspective. I mean, you know, I hadn't thought about the book example. I mean, there are tons of free little libraries, but I mean, I'm okay with books or, you know, being open to materials that would otherwise not be easily recycled. And if someone wants to come and provide an option for that and work in partnership with another entity in our community, I, I'm certainly open to that. I'm also open to revisiting and coming back and taking the lessons we learned when there's, when that next example comes. So I, I mean, I, I think we should try and encourage that, that type of, I mean, I don't think there's a model right now or an option right now. If you have clothing that, that is not in good enough shape to donate, your option right now is throw it away. This provides another option and an option that can also benefit our schools or another civic or nonprofit institution. I think we should encourage things like that.
I would keep it very narrow at the beginning. And then, you know, if we need to expand, I know that doesn't even metroways have like hardboard recycling in some communities? Somewhere, I mean, I don't know. But I'm just saying, I would keep it very narrow right now and, and make sure the size and specifications and get them off the sidewalk and, and try it. Because their clothing is something that just, there's no place to, when it's old, it's.
I, I'm, I'm only supportive if it's in the back behind where it's not visibly seen by the neighborhood. I think it's. I think it's, it's a detriment to our neighborhoods to have these bins, and we're just opening it up. We have one, and then we have two, and then pretty soon, we have five or six different, different kinds of recycling. Just think there's, there's better ways to do it. So I'm only going to be, so I'm only going to vote for it if it is in the back with the ref, with the other refuge container. Now, if they, if you make them, close them or not, I don't care about that, but I don't, I don't think we should have to drive by and see them.
So you'd want to keep it just in maybe clothing at this point?
Just clothing. Well, if we even allow them.
Got it.
I mean, don't forget option D.
Clothing, rags, or not to be re-sold or reworn, right?
That's what they do right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that what you would want to be?
Yeah, I was, I was, I told Linda, well, I have jeans with holes in the knees, but I, I guess those are valuable now.
Those are in style.
Should sell those. Marketplace, here we come.
Well, what happens to this clothing? I mean, it's bundled, recycled, who's, who's taking it?
I think, I think they are, they are a middle operator that sends it on to somebody that would process it into fiber, that gets reused for other textiles.
Mattresses, I think they said.
Yeah, different purposes for that material. Not unlike the way paper gets processed or handled for different purposes, once it's been recycled.
No, no, I did, I, you know, we do this whole recycling bin stuff, and then you hear that, that nobody's taking the recyclables anymore, and so it ends up being trash.
Well, so in this case, I don't know, I can't speak to whether some of it ends up in the landfill or not, but I believe the, they do have buyers for this material that gets, makes it a commodity, so, I don't know, I can't speak to how much of that may end up in the landfill at the end.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know the process that far. Certainly, that'd be something, if you have revisions to the code coming in front of you, that you could ask the vendor, because I'm sure they would want to...
We're not aware of any local use of that product, so it's likely going out of state.
Or out of country.
Could be.
So if, if we are gonna, if we are gonna allow these, oh, I'm sorry. Did you have something, sir?
Well, I, I would probably say A is what I would, would I would probably limit it to option A, the 100 feet. I mean, if, if we're going to allow the, the use right now of how it is, I mean, I haven't had a whole lot of complaints from, I've had more people tell me they wanted at schools, though. I mean, I don't want it to block the side sidewalks or fire lanes. I mean, I guess, I shouldn't say that, because if people pull up and their kid jumps out with the bag and throws it in there and then goes off to school, I mean, it's probably okay. I mean, I don't think it's causing that big of a traffic hazard to where people are stopping in the parking lot and throwing it in there, I mean...
The way we had written that was to not place the actual bins in the aisles or...
Oh, in the actual fire lane, not?
Yes, yes.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I would agree with that. I mean, it, it should be very limited, and you're going to look at it every year with a permit, right?
That would be the recommendation, yes.
So, I mean, we know where they're, it needs to be on a hard surface, I agree with that, I mean, it can't sit on the grass, I mean, it's got to look, I mean, they, they've moved most of them that weren't looking a little unprofessional, we'll leave it at that. So I, they've noticed, I've noticed they have moved those. But I think they're getting used, and I, I know I've heard from some of the schools that, you know, don't take those things away, you know, they actually, we actually get something out of them.
And, and I've heard about that from advocates that are working...
Not from the business owner, actually.
No, with parents and groups that are working with schools, yeah.
Told me that, so...
I've heard from them.
I mean, I think that we should look at it in that way, that it is giving a benefit of recycling and, and helping the students, because that's ultimately what we need to do in our community. I mean, it, I mean, I understand the whole argument that it's trashing out our neighborhoods, but those boxes aren't, I mean, th, those are steel, they're nice, nicely painted, we're going to inspect them every year, make sure they all still look the same and nice, they're going to be clearly labeled, they're not going to keep their junk, I haven't had any complaints and nobody throwing their junk around there and having it sit there longer than 24 hours, I don't know.
We had that early, when we originally got complaints.
I think that, I think he's taken care of that issue, so, I mean, I would, I would recommend A with very narrow, yeah, only clothing.
So I have some other, th, these are some standards that we would want to put on them to enable our enforcement. This is a bullet list of things that we would want to, again, give us the ability to easier enforce if we had to go forward, making it very clear what isn't acceptable, what is acceptable, so that when we do have to enforce, we have affirmative language in the code that would give us the ability to send up notices, violation, that type of thing. I'll give you more time, since we got, you know, we slowed down there, I didn't want to read all of these to you, but they're set up to basically give us the ability to enforce on those situations that we don't want to see. Some other considerations, again, we're recommending option A, to allow them as a permit-type process, more like, more like a business-type license. Only in P1 and P2, so limiting them to a narrow set of zoning districts. The range of items, we're recommending limiting them only to textile and clothing items. I don't think we have to get into whether they're resold or recycled. We would want a fee, again, that's both to recoup our costs as the city, as well as having something there in place so that somebody's not just walking in the door, making an application or something with, without really being organized or a proper vendor. Then the other thing is signage restrictions. I think 20 square feet was what we know, we saw on the other examples around the country, so... If you, if you think that they have to be back further than 25, you know, or if they're, you would want to limit that more if they were closer than 25 feet, is what that's saying there, basically, so that...
Do they all fit?
We don't want them to become a sign, we're not regulating content, by the way, so my worry is that you start getting them up at the front, then they're going to want to slap other types of advertising on them if you give them a lot of leeway with the area. So certainly, I think we would want to limit the area if they are going to be allowed to be closer than the 100 feet that we're suggesting, for sure.
So does the 25 feet meet all of them that are existing right now, or do they have to move some of them?
No, they would have to move, they would definitely have to move some of them into the site. Now, I'll give you an example, McCombs, there's two, they're, they're back at least 25 feet.
Yeah, I know.
But they're still way out in front of the building, so...
On the sidewalk?
The school sidewalk going up.
Yeah, I think at Edmunds is where we ran into the situation where it's on the bus drop area that they don't use anymore, apparently, but it's in, that was actually in the right way, so they pushed those back, and then, then it, Windsor, I think it's right up against this, the public sidewalk there on University in the grass, so that wouldn't be allowed.
Be in, no.
They'd have to come up with a new location.
Be allowed, I guess I haven't seen anything like that.
So the next steps for the council and staff are to get legal, legal's already got a good set of language here to start from and won't take long to put together the draft language for coming back in front of you for approval for the code. We would also want to communicate with stakeholders about this process so that they know where their opportunities are for involvement in the approval of any changes. We want to make sure we're working with other departments here in the city to update any systems, like, for example, transient merchants is something that gets tracked through the enter gov system, we would probably set up a similar type system where the vendors are applying through our online portal, and most of the permitting is an electronic-type review and permitting.
So, is, I'm sorry, so is the stakeholders, the schools?
Could be the schools, the PTA groups, the beneficiaries, yeah.
Okay, and then, we only have one vendor, vendor that...
Currently, we have one vendor. I don't know, I'd have to look to see how we cast the net to, I don't really want to invite others at the same time, so, yeah.
That's why I'm asking.
So, so I doubt we're going to, you know, do extensive...
Okay.
We definitely want to involve the ones that have claimed that they're already stakeholders in the process, so...
All right.
We don't want to be, you know, not transparent, I guess.
Yeah, okay.
Managing the existing enforcement cases, so once we know a direction and we're heading with changes to the code, at that point, we can now then begin to, because right now, everything's kind of on pause, we're not, we're not sending anything in front of the district court or anything on enforcement, so depending on which direction we head, we would either get them into compliance with permits and, and locations and so forth, or go back to doing what we were doing before if we don't do anything.
What's everybody think? I think we ought to move forward with this thing.
I think it needs to be done by the fall when school starts again and put them all in the places that we want them.
I would agree, I, I mean, I like option A. I, I think the 100-foot setback is, is too much, and I think we'll get feedback about that from the stakeholders. I, I'd, you know, 25 feet, seems like it would accomplish a lot of what we're trying to accomplish, but with 100 foot, like, give a little more flexibility so that it can be workable for, for what this is trying to accomplish as well.
And by doing that, you're likely putting that in a school or a church situation, you're probably saying that's okay to be in a front yard area as well, as it's defined.
Front yard area, but not right...
Not on the yard.
Front yard area, but not right up front.
Right. So if they have parking out front of the building, it would be okay, 25 feet back from the, the, the street property line into the property within the parking lot or something? Like, that, that would just be an example.
Yeah, I think, too, to make sure that whatever we do, whatever ordinance that we love, because it's going to be primarily wherever they place them, the property owner needs to know exactly the rules, so...
Yep, so as I indicated in that one point, we would want, this would come along, this permitting process would involve a site map, and they would actually have to designate where that is. We would review that and make sure that it meets all of those standards. Not blocking any traffic ways, not eating up parking that they need, that type of thing.
And would the property owner apply for the permit or the vendor?
The, the property owner would have to consent, because they're also consenting to allow then the city to come in and abate, if necessary, so it's the property owner consenting, but if the vendor wants to do all the legwork for that, you know, using the CSS portal online, it's just like a sign contractor can pull a permit for a property owner, so it can be set up that way.
So Eric, the school district would be the property owner for some of the schools that have been mentioned?
Yes.
Do you have a school district contact that you're going to be working with, just to...
Yeah, I, I've already been working, I just lost his name.
Dave Berger?
No, it's not Dave, it's the operations. I knew it till you asked me.
Sorry.
But yes, I, I have a contact at, at the...
Great, thanks.
That's, he's been the one that's, that first made the phone call when we sent out notices, so they're, they're aware, and they're, they're staying neutral right now until something comes out of this process, so...
It's sort of sounding like option A is preferred, although it seems like maybe there's some difference of opinion on setbacks and maybe a couple of the other variables.
And if that, I guess, I'll take some direction, right now, I'm, we'll maybe draft something at 25, and if that's not going to meet the council's will when it comes in front of you, that's something that can get adjusted through the approval process.
I'm probably okay with 25, and that's where they're sitting now. I mean, but...
That are too close around the sidewalks, so I think it covers what you need and...
I don't get a lot of complaints about them, so that's what I'm basing my decision on. I had a lot of people screaming at me about how bad they looked, I just don't have that, so they are providing a benefit.
One of the things that we would look at when legal prepares code language is the enforcement process, whether that, and right now, for example, transient merchants involves a administrative hearing officer option, so that would be something that we would also come back with. I don't really have, until they look at the case law and things, I don't have a good solution for sure on how to do that, but...
What do you mean, just enforcement?
Yeah. I'm not asking the council for any input there, I just wanted you to be aware that one of the things that we'll come back with that is also the remedy.
Whatever we have, to where if they're not following by the rules, they need to be removed, and not two years later, they need to be removed.
And if we get direction from legal that we can just do that, you know, there's going to be a due process that's involved with whatever.
Well, I'm sure they'll have an opportunity to move it into the right place, but if they refuse to move it in the right place, I would say 30 days would be plenty of ample time to move it in the right place. If it's not in the right place within 30 days, then yes, I, I would hope that we would come up with some type of legal action to remove it.
Well, it's our hope that we can have them agree to that at the front.
Yes.
What I don't know is if we can legally ask them to agree to something and then...
Well, I'd get it in the front side.
Well, we're, we're going to attempt to do that, yes. I just wanted you to be aware that there might be some analysis on the legal end that comes up with a little bit of difference to that.
So Eric, do you get to start us out on the next?
Yes.
So...
Checking here, do I need to do something?
So the next item, mayor and council, is addressing policy, addressing policy? And this is where we have put into writing, the staff have put together a draft policy on how to handle both new addresses, when you've got new construction, but also when we come across issues, especially with public safety and being able to locate different properties, and cleaning up some of the addresses that maybe are inconsistent. So in the past, it was a case-by-case situation, and we needed to get this in writing, what the policy actually is, and a group from multiple departments sat down and worked through this over several months, so I really appreciate the, the work and effort that went into this, this particular policy, so Eric?
Thank you. So just by, by luck, you got me on another item that was already scheduled before the one that got bumped, so. So this is another function of the zoning enforcement officer. By code, the zoning enforcement officer serves as the address administrator as well, so it does fall into the neighborhood services arena. Why are we talking about this? You know, we've addressed, as long as I've been here, it's something we do every day just about, but why are we bringing this back to the city council? Some of it's due to the fact that we've changed our organization structurally into two different departments, but both of those departments deal with addressing, so we have to sort of define what the different roles are. The other thing is that we changed our technology on how we do permitting and a number of things that really are address-based systems, so we also wanted to have some clear policy on how we are doing addressing to make sure we're facilitating those systems. This, so through this process, we, we created a team across departments, and some of them are here today, the fire marshals here, Jonathan Lund, Pa Goldbeck from the manager's office. We had involvement from the IT department, GIS services, development services, all the public safety, both fire, police, they were very involved in this review process, so thanks to all those that were involved, of course, because you can't just take one perspective on this or you don't come up with a good solution. The short-term goals here, get an overview of the addressing process and have input on key components of addressing. in, uh, input on key components of addressing. Again, I know the council does not want to dive into the weeds of how addressing gets done, but certainly they have some thoughts, I'm sure, on the bigger, uh, scope of things. We do want to have this formal policy in place, which, uh, after, um, consultation, the legal department did believe the way the code reads, that the council really does have to see this as a policy in front of them for adoption rather than something that just sits out there administratively. Um, that way, we, again, they're a little bit more defensible for one, so, um, that, that's what, why we're coming in front of you. Um, there also would probably involve some minor changes to ordinances that do speak to addressing across the code. Uh, a lot of that is just to eliminate some conflicts and get consistency with the policy that we're going to move ahead with. Um, we want to make sure that probably paramount that we are addressing in a way that's, um, in the interest of public safety and is predictable, consistent. And we want to make sure it's clear to the public what our policy intentions are, because if you left it up to the public, they would address the way they want to be addressed and that's not necessarily in the best interest of public safety or consistency. Uh, who gets involved in addressing? Of course, the developers, the owners of property are the ones that, uh, we generally initiate an address situation, but also many situations are through city departments, depending on a public project that causes changes in addressing. So we have multiple departments that provide input to address changes. Uh, occasionally, we get input from outside of the city on needs for addressing. Um, every once in a while, I get a phone call from somebody at the post office saying that they're having a problem with a si- situation that was probably a broken addressing assignment from years ago that's, um, made it difficult for them to actually deliver mail. So, so we do get, um, contacted from these outside agencies. The other one is Mid-American and some of the utility partners, um, need addresses for what they do as well, so.
Current addresses that there may be a gap and then for new construction and development.
Yes, or anything that we may need to go back and, and fix. Now, I wouldn't be suggesting that we're going to go and overhaul everybody's address around the city through this, through this, but there are situations that get made aware where we do probably need to fix a problem with an address change, um, on an existing situation, so.
And when I've ran into that before, I know several years ago, Sue Ann said we had to go through the post office.
So when we make an assignment, it ultimately gets sent through the post office, yes. But they don't make the dessert, they don't make the determination, we do as a city.
You make, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I've not been aware of a situation where the post office came back and said, no, that's not sufficient. We, they're, they do have some structural components to what they have to have, but we don't assign anything that's not within that parameter that the post office provides. So this is a little list of reasons why we address, there's many reasons, I already mentioned several of them. Probably the most common is there's a lot of vacant property out there that, uh, we get a lot of infills now, so we get a lot of requests to get an address so they can get a building permit to build a home on a property, um, but we also have a lot of addressing that gets it done with plating of new properties and commercial projects, um, where they need subaddresses like suite numbers and things like that, so, um, it's, it's a constant, uh, thing that gets put on my plate, I can tell you that. Again, the goals, public safety is the paramount, consistency, predictability, weight finding, we want people to be able to find their way to a location, even if that's a, uh, metro net control box at the edge of the street. Somebody needs to find their way to that if there's a problem, um, or the person that needs to read the electrical meter. So it's very, in, in today's information, Abe, that information is very important. Uh, what's in our code today? We have sections of the code that address different aspects of addressing, the fire code, um, chapter twenty-six, which is a permitting, uh, chapter of our code that talks about address identification on buildings, um, chapter one oh two as well, which is the subdivision, uh, part of the subdivision code, I'm sorry, that's one oh six. Um, one oh two deals with the numbering on buildings as well. Um, if you read those, there might be a little bit of conflict on that, that we're going to have to clean up and get consistent. Uh, we have a policy guide that was put together in two thousand four, but I don't believe that ever went through the city council. So it was drafted by a group and we had been generally operating under it, uh, but not actually something that went to, um, the city council. Another piece to that was the Addressing Administration Guide in two thousand twelve, which got, gave more specifics on the, the practical, um, application of addressing, how we, and again, we're, this process, we're sort of merging those things. And then in two thousand nine, there was, uh, policy on renaming streets with honorable names, other facilities throughout the city like parks and parkland, um, city buildings with naming, that's on the, that's sort of on the periphery of this, but it is, it is related. Um, we also have an ongoing operating address review committee that is cross-departmental. Um, it's actually a larger scope than the group that worked on the policy update, um, but it meets monthly and so we go over situations that have come up that deal with addressing and, uh, more heads is always helpful to get different perspectives and of course, we always want to have, um, something that's safe and works for, works for the end user, so. Um, that process keeps it from being one individual, uh, making everything, making all the decisions.
Where we've recently annexed land, like there's some, there's some property in, it's actually Des Moines would be just east of Brook Run, where those people, if you go into the city assessor, it still has an Altoona mailing address, but it's the city of Des Moines.
Yeah, actually, they should be using Des Moines. Now, the problem is when the, the data that the pu- the post office provides to like private companies that use addressing, use, they use a name associated with that zip code. So if we have zip codes that overlap into Des Moines jurisdiction, it may be an al- a primary Altoona zip code and they've been using that and the reality of that is, is that it doesn't affect the mail, because the zip code's the important piece of it. Um, technically, they should be using Des Moines and, and when we would do something, we would use Des Moines in most cases.
So who corrects that? I mean, wouldn't the city work with-
So when we cha- we do a change, we actually send it to them. Um, I don't know how, how to fix the situation where it picks the, the, you know, let's say it's Amazon. Amazon gets the data from the post office. Well, there's two jurisdictions, um, tied to that zip code. Amazon script might just pull one of those, for example, and it might be the predominant. There's always a primary, which, because it's based on where the post office that it's assigned to. So there definitely are parts of the city of Des Moines that are-
Oh, yeah.
Parts of the ad, you know, post offices that aren't in city of Des Moines, so.
There's a, there's a place out on Beardsley Drive on the south side that's actually Des Moines, but it's a Norwalk.
Yeah, we have Norwalk, we get Indianola, we get Carlisle, yeah, so, um, whenever we send out the address assignment, we use Des Moines.
Okay.
And I think that the post office puts that in their data, but sometimes the use of that data doesn't, by a private company, doesn't always get used properly.
So this won't really fix?
I don't know if it'll fix that situation that you mentioned necessarily. Um, again, we're doing our best on our end, but we can't force the Googles of the world and so forth to-
Okay.
Update their information, unfortunately.
Just by chance, Eric, are you familiar with how often the post office changes zip codes? Seems pretty infrequent.
I am not, I am not. Yeah, I, I don't know how often they-
So until they do that-
If they reevaluate or reportion, if that's, gets done with census data or how that, how they do that, but, um, no, I don't know the answer to that.
That would be the only way to fix it and that's not something-
But even so, like Broadway, when we annex that, now those addresses are northeast forty-sixth-
So, so when we do a name-
Something instead of Broadway.
Right, when we do a name change, a street name change, then we do do an address change, but then we would send out address letters to the post office and those, those should get corrected, yeah.
So refresh my memory, what happened down here in the Bridge District, where we tried to change all of their addresses?
And then that was a private street issue?
Is that?
Yeah, yeah. That would be an example of something we-
You're going to see some examples.
Wouldn't follow the policy that we're pushing ahead, so.
Okay.
Just to let you know, um, which is ma- maybe why we got to where we're at a little bit.
Yeah, that was a nightmare. That was a whole group of, like, whole street.
So, so we're going to try to get out of here.
Okay, I agree.
All of these elements are things that you would see in an address itself, um, or related to what requires an address. One of the things we want to address is the format. Again, some of that was, the, the post office sets some certain, certain parameters, just so that the digital information is readable through their systems and is, uh, you know, works in that perspective. Um, one of the things we want to avoid is directional, we don't want to create too many directional suffixes or affixes. Um, so in Des Moines, we generally avoid those to the extent we can, but we-
I guess I don't understand why, you know, like on the south side, South Union divides southeast and southwest.
Mm-hmm.
So a- as a, as a vendor, when you take someone's, you know, five twenty-five park, you'd like to know if it's five twenty-five East Park or five twenty-five Southwest.
Yes, yeah, so again, certain, you know, the way we've grown to where we're at now, that it's unavoidable, but I'm just saying, we try to not stack on new ones. If you go to some places, you have a, add a direction on the front of the address and at the end of the address. You have northwest and, you know-
But with a vacant lot-
Northwest one hundred and six southeast or something like that, you know.
But with a vacant lot, you would put, it'd still be like southeast or, or southwest, right?
Yeah, yeah, so it's going to be based on the street, street name, so.
But still the same zip code, though. It, it can't go, I mean, there's so many streets that run, South Union divides.
We do run into problems when the Googles or the, you know, Amazons of the world don't key those in the right way. We had one individual called me that somehow that they didn't put, uh, one of the south side streets, Sheridan or something, they had identical numbers-
Yeah, they're-
Which you can't avoid, because there's just so many numbers, right?
Right.
Um, they were getting, uh, feral raccoons dropped off at their address, because the one that had the address on the other side of town, on the same street, but east to west different, you know, east or not east, um, was a volunteer that took up, took in, um, uh, adoption or fostered, um, raccoons. So, that's an extreme example, but yeah, it happens for sure and we get calls about it, trust me. Um, and, and some of those, I can, you know, look, if, just changing their number isn't going to necessarily, it'll help them, but it isn't always a possibility, because there may not be that number available to do that, based on who's on the either side of their property. But, uh, so in some cases, I can't do anything for that situation, other than we can send something to Google saying, hey, it's come to our attention-
Sure.
That we have this issue and some of that you put into Google Maps or whatever and it's not coming up right and that unfortunately, delivery people use that information, so it, it's important. That'd be, that'd be something we would love to update or, or get a better relationship with to, to affect or have an influence on that, uh, information. These are just examples of the suffix types. We want to have a limited list, you know, we get some kind of weird, developers like to propose some pretty wild, uh, things, to be honest with you, so, but we want to have a limited set that we work within when we're letting them know what you have available when you're coming up with your street names. Uh, we're on a hundred-block, you know, interval scheme, basically. We already have in our code section in one oh two, what, you know, how the numbering should be on the north side, south side, east side, west side, depending on which side of the street, whether the numbers are odd or even. So we've already got that predetermined, I don't think we're looking to change that pattern. Um, we do want to go in numeric sequence, you know, even in the example here where we have a driveway keying back to a big box retailer, um, where we want to make sure that we're in sequence, going south for the number, you know, on the southeast fourteenth street, the numbers get bigger as you go south. So we want to make sure that people and emergency services are finding that by way of the sequence as they come up on the street with their main entrance.
So with something like that, if you change the entryway in the future, I mean, you've got the fifty-nine sixty, I mean hypothetically, if the entryway went, went farther north-
Yeah, there, it's possible that we would look at an address change in that situation if it made sense from a public, you know, if, if it made it better for the fire department or the emergency services to get to there quicker, we would certainly consider that. Um, it is, there's also something to not just changing somebody's address, uh, that's been that way for, you know, hundreds of years sometimes, but-
I, I agree, although we've had-
Sometimes you can't avoid it, yeah.
We've had lots of examples where the change comes up.
Certain, and that's when we, that's when we want to have this policy in place, so we can manage those situations. Um, when we do street naming, we want to match the existing grid as a predominant thing to begin with. Um, sometimes it's not possible, then we provide street, uh, name choices then based on the policy and you saw some of the suffixes that we would limit them to. Um, we really generally only want to address off public streets. That speaks to the example Council Ngato mentioned, where we're addressing off private streets. Again, in certain large-scale situations with a lot of private streets, we can't avoid that. Airport's an actual example of that. And it, they're technically public, because the airport's public, but they're not public street right-ofways, so we have to address off of named drives and roads that are within the airport, just because it's so large and, and to be able to find those.
Eric, if I could, just real quick, the, and the, part of the reason for that is oftentimes about private streets don't have, uh, the capacity for our public safety vehicles. And so where we are addressing off of private streets, uh, we need to make sure that, that they can get there in a safe way.
And that, of course, they're looking for access to hydrants and things that have to be there, when we, we normally have those on our public street system, not always on our private network. Um, we also have to avoid, um, duplicative names, uh, that this comes up when we've had to rename at the fringes, when we annex, the same name has been used. Carpenter is a good example. We have Carpenter up in the Drake area, we had Carpenter in Warren County, we, well, we couldn't have addressing off a Carpenter down at the south, at, you know, miles away, um, that creates a problem. So when, whenever we annex, we have to take, take a look at that, make sure we're not duplicating names. Uh, also don't want to, you see the example of their day and Day Street, we don't, when somebody says Day Street to an E nine-one-one operator, they don't know it's D E Y versus D A Y, so we want to avoid the homonym, um, situation where different spellings of the same sound.
Avenue.
Well, so drive, that's-
I mean, I, we don't want to change, we've got some-
Yeah.
Father where you have-
Yeah, and especially if you're matching existing grid too. Um, so yeah, if we're just talking about a completely new area, avoid that same name with multiple suffixes like drive and avenue and, yeah. So, um, but when we're trying to match into the existing grid, we also have to kind of honor that as a primary predominant.
Right, it's there, it's there.
And so it's, yeah, yeah, so-
Changing that with people-
Now, the, you know, from a, um, when the emergency services brings it up, they should be able to distinguish drive and they, they train on that. Jonathan will tell you that.
And don't avenues go east-west and streets go north-south?
In Des Moines, yes. And courts and places, yeah.
Yeah, they all have, I mean, if you've got an avenue, you know that it's, you know that it's a-
So on the west side- So on the west side, court is an in-between numbered street, so there's same number but half blocks, basically, with courts. On the east side, it's place. Or maybe I've got that, no, I'm sorry, I got it reversed. East side's courts, west side is places. So you'll see a half, the same number used historically in a half-block situation. On the west side of town, it was places. On the east side, it was courts. So we have some scenarios. I can run through them. I don't know if times become an issue. These are some scenarios that are really kind of great examples of one of the reasons why we're addressing apartments and condos. These are projects, you know, in the last 30 years, we've certainly had a lot of our housing has become reviewed under apartments and condos, and we want to make sure that we're addressing them in a way that public safety can find them. We want to make sure that there's a unique street address number to the main entrance of the apartment or condo development. Separate address numbers, we want to see assigned to the property where there's a main driveway that joins a public street. Mixed-use buildings and multiple buildings should be assigned a single numerical address when possible, and then with a letter designation for each building on that same property. And so that you'll see why that comes up. This is an example down on the southeast side, the Melbourne Apartments. That overall property has a single address. Then it has buildings A, B, C, D, all the way through I, and then within each building, there's separate unit numbers based on the floor. The numbering matches the floor. To the east, that's a, another project, again, where you see the number, the street numbers are same with unit numbers under different building, letter numbers. Townhomes and row housing, again, with unique, especially with separate parcels related to the townhome, separate ownership parcels. We, if there's enough available addresses, we try to give them unique numbered addresses. That isn't always possible, though. So here's a couple other examples with some of the properties. Again, we do that even if they're not, the unit doesn't front the street directly where we have a drive coming in. We still want to address with a unique number, moving back with a bigger number as you go back away from the street. This is a new one up on Merle Hay, just another example, where we gave them, again, unique numbers. Then we have down in the Gray's Station area, Gray's Landing, I'm sorry. So these are all private drives that come off of a public street. So the north-south street there is Southwest 12th, I believe. And again, with each drive, depending on which side of the street it is, it gets odd or even numbers, and then they, each of those units get separate numbers, numbered locations if there's enough numbers available in that range. Again, if we get too dense, we may have to go to another solution. And I'll, this is another example over there on Kyo Way. Again, in that situation, some of the units' access was coming off of 12th, so they were numbered off 12th. The ones that have access off Kyo were addressed off Kyo. Down by the levee, Southwest 7th, there's a situation where we didn't have enough addresses that we could have assigned them each a unique address. So we went with a single address and then gave them separate unit numbers in a fashion, a sequential fashion that allowed emergency services to find the unit easier. But if we had to come up with enough unique numbers in that street range, we wouldn't have been able to do it. This is a slide about policy exceptions. You'll write on the, that's Cityville. We have four public streets on each side of this development. From a public safety perspective, it made more sense to address buildings off the street that they fronted directly rather than give them a single address, perhaps off of Southwest 9th, with building letters or something, which would have made the ones over on Southwest 11th more difficult to find in an emergency situation. These are some standards that we, I've already kind of talked through them. One thing to note here is when you have basement, if you're starting to go down underground, then we want to start putting a B designation. The first basement level would be B1, B2. So there are situations where we have to address below grade. Not very often, but we have to have a policy in place as to how we're going to do it when it comes up. This is the process discussion about how we do notify when there is an address change. It does vary depending on what's causing this. If it's just a utility box where it needs a address for the meter, we don't involve a whole bunch of jurisdictions. We do, we will, you know, for instance, the post office doesn't really need to mail it, but we still, we will still send them a notice in those situations. They definitely get an address. GIS gets it, public safety gets it, because they need to know where it's located if there's a problem. But in every case, we're generally going to make a physical letter mailing to the property owner so they know what's addressed on their property. And then that gets disseminated to those same stakeholders that we talked about at the front end that were involved with the committee, the counties, the emergency management, the public safety, the post office, the utilities, they all get notice of the address. So the next steps here are coming forward then with the draft policy, which won't take much time because it's already drafted. We didn't want to throw it in your lap to have you reading through it while we sort of outline this for you, but we'll provide that with the process coming forward. That'll involve some text changes to the code to acknowledge the policy as it comes forward. And then at the end of that approval process, then we would disseminate information to all the stakeholders and make it available on our website and so forth for the public to understand how we're, what our policy is on addressing so that it's clear when somebody has an address issue, what they need to do, who they need to direct their questions to, how they might get it changed. I don't know if we really want to invite them to just ask or request an address because they want one. Sometimes people want them for marketing reasons more than anything else. That doesn't always, I don't think we want to be set up to just accommodate that if that's the only purpose, because we just get all kinds of requests, to be honest with you. Any questions that anybody has? I know you had a few during the process.
There's one down here.
When does this involve the affected property owners? You're going to change my address?
So to be honest with you, when we do make a change, I mean, unless they're already involved in the discussion with us, they aren't necessarily, there are occasions where we have to change somebody's address because it needs to be changed for a safety reason or something. And we just notify them. They generally have a year to make the transition, and it tells them that in the letter that they get. So, yeah, it gives them some time to, you know, so they aren't immediately faced with, they do need, they do have a 30-day window to post it so that public safety can find it, for example. But we have some situations in our neighborhoods where somehow a house got addressed out of sequence, and then we're having trouble with some vacant lots that need houses, house numbers, and they can't use the number that's out of sequence, so we'll readdress that house. And we send them a letter notifying them that they're getting a change. They don't really have a lot of input into the matter, to be honest with you. But so, I suppose, I've gotten a call from some landlords before. We've had to change some apartment numbering, for example, due to rental code needs in our system for doing rental permits. And so we've had to do some readdressing on that. And sometimes we get a little resistance. And then Josh isn't sitting here, but one example was a situation at the AIB campus with some of the addressing that occurred there, where we went a little bit back and forth on an address, but we, once we got it through the committee, I think we landed on being able to accommodate their need and our needs as well. So there is a little bit of arbitration going on there in that committee from time to time.
All right, anything else? Anybody? All right, Eric, thank you.
Thank you.
Scott, any closing thoughts?
No.
All right, and we're going to be here at 4:00?
4:45.
4:45, all right. And then in the morning?
Yes, again.
Tomorrow.
4:40.
Yes, it is at the library.
8:00 AM, Central Library.
8:00 AM, Central Library. We're going to learn about the library.
We're going to learn about
That's right. In the conference room?
Yes.
First floor, south?
Hopefully everyone.
All right. Until 4:45, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.